Travel Town is located right off the Forest Lawn exit of the 134 freeway, very near to where the 5 and the 134 come together. We're kind of this hidden gem that people don't know about.
All aboard, Choo Choo!
All that great work wouldn't be possible without the many volunteers that make Travel Town an L.A. gem. If you'd like to get involved, visit the foundation's website at traveltown.org. From antique trains to abstract modernism, Los Angeles continues to make local attractions and high-end art more accessible and affordable for SoCal families. The latest example: free admission days at the Museum of Contemporary Art. Check out how Moca does family fun.
We are kicking off free general admission for everybody here in Los Angeles and beyond, and we're having a great festival all day to celebrate with our community. Our board president, Carolyn Clark-Powers, made an announcement in late May. She gave a gift of $10 million to make this possible for Moca to offer free general admission for everybody.
This is huge for the city. We know that access to art is everything. When a young person, or a visitor, or somebody who's even lived a couple blocks away knows that it is free, we find that admission goes up, that the richness of experience goes forward. And L.A. is the art capital of the world right now.
Now that they're making it more accessible for people to come, and the fact that they're not charging is amazing for people that, you know, like, say, like, this is something that's great. You get to learn, you get to be a part of the experience without having to, you know, spend money and stuff. It's going to bring a lot more people, and I think that's really important.
No longer is there an excuse for people not to come to Moca. It is free every day. The permanent collection is free. We offer tours. There are free art-making activities for kids, you know, during the month. Check out moca.org and see what we have to offer.
I agree, Mayor Garcetti. Access to art is everything. In fact, the Central Library has an art exhibit where you can actually leave your own personal impression. The exhibit is called "The Autograph Book," and our own site, Apegan, dropped by to make her mark.
It's an autograph collection like no other at the Los Angeles Central Library. Hundreds of signatures, artwork, and writings from both the famous and everyday people dating back more than a century.
One of my favorites came in from a library patron, and they wrote, "I just want to be a part of it," which sort of sums up the sentiment of some of these people who are leaving their marks in the collection.
Curators say it was all librarian Charles Loomis's idea. In 1906, he sent out this letter with blank stationery. He instructed notable people of the day to simply improve this enclosed page. Educator Booker T. Washington wrote back. Writer and activist Helen Keller also responded. And Langston Hughes sent in a poem. Catherine Lee Bates filled the page with the words to her song, "America the Beautiful." But since then, the collection has become much more inclusive. People from all walks of life have sent in their autographs, their writings, and more.
What's really special about the exhibit is the way that it was expanded by the foundation and the city librarian to include modern Angelenos and current people who are doing things.
There is street art on display, graffiti replicated from the streets of Los Angeles, and images telling compelling, thought-provoking stories. This one rare exhibit features thousands of signatures presented to the astronauts after the moon landing. The exhibit also includes a book. It is simply titled "The Autograph Book of L.A."
I feel like it helps people leave their mark on history. It's a way that a person can individually show their mark on something.
I think it's actually nice, really, because, like I was saying earlier, it's just nice to see, like, not only the people that have come through the library, or like, the autographs that have been, like, put down on paper, but also just like, the development of, like, writing, actually.
Only the main highlights of the collection are included in the library exhibit. Hundreds of other pieces are housed in the rare book section of the L.A. Central Library.
I thought it would be fun to add my name to the collection, so here's what I wrote: "I'm here at the L.A. Central Library doing a very fun story about a wonderful autograph collection. Saeda Pagan for L.A. This Week."
And there's another book arts exhibit happening at the Central Library. The Coretta Scott King Awards was established to recognize exceptional work from new African-American authors and illustrators. Anna Marcos visited the library to see how these works are now a celebrated visual art exhibit.
African-American children's book authors and illustrators haven't always had their voices heard in mainstream literature, but this exhibit celebrates 50 years of putting those voices front and center.
So many times, our stories are not told, and so individual -- children may grow up and never see themselves in the pages of books. And it's important for them to see themselves reflected in that manner, and to be proud of who they are.
The L.A. Public Library is hosting the exhibit called Voices, celebrating the Coretta Scott King Illustrator Awards. The artwork comes from books that have won the prestigious award. It highlights both books and illustrations by exceptional storytellers of the African-American experience. Two determined librarians created the awards back in 1969 after attending an American Library Association conference and getting a sort of a wake-up call.
African-American authors were not recognized over the years, and this was in 1969. And that's how the Coretta Scott King Award came about, to recognize outstanding authors and illustrators of children's literature, African-Americans.
The first one I saw was the illustration of Rosa Parks, which made me think about the struggles and how different things were not that long ago.
The exhibit features more than 100 prize-winning book illustrations. The topics range from slavery to African creation myths to hairstyles.
For instance, Crown is one of the most recent titles, and it shows an African-American young boy after he gets his hair done, and how his health esteem is boosted, and so that's really important for young people to see as well.
There is even a little cubbyhole children's reading area stocked with some of the award-winning books. So what are college students doing reading children's books in a circle? We wanted to know.
The illustrations are beautiful, and I want to do children's book illustrations. So I love seeing these, and it's so well-done. But yeah, they have this really cool page right here, and it just, like, folds out, and it shows, like, the whole team of the First Color World Series.
For me personally, growing up, being African-American, I didn't have any books with, like, kids that looked like me. Even reading this book about a young musician, it was really powerful, because I felt like I really had to pave my way to become a musician when I was 10 years old.
The exhibit will be on display at the L.A. Public Library's downtown branch until February 9th.
Do you remember home economics or shop class when you were in high school? Well, things have really changed since then. Maria Hall Brown gives us a look at an organization doing great work on vocational skills. Maria?
Thanks, Umeema. I had an opportunity to sit down with the folks from Skills USA, a remarkable organization that have been helping youth find their way for decades. In this ever-changing, complicated world, for a young person determining what they want to be when they grow up is also partnered with who they want to be and how to get there. But fortunately, there's a wonderful organization to help. I'm delighted to be joined by Clay Mitchell, the state director of Skills USA. Thanks for being here.
My pleasure, Maria.
All right. Skills USA obviously has a vast array of things that they offer young people in determining, you know, what course they want to take in their lives. What does Skills USA do?
So Skills USA is a career technical student organization. So that's a nice education jargon that talks about how do we help students make quality decisions for careers, and what do they need to do to get there so they can be successful in life? People from business and industries that are looking for our products, which are our students, come to an event. The California event is about 3,200 students, and the national event is about 8,000 students. They come in, they have their time slot, and they perform whatever skill or task that they have set up from business and industry with their knowledge and their skill set.
Clay and I are delighted now to be joined by Loretta Cabaludal, who is the state membership and chapter coordinator. Welcome, welcome, welcome.
Thank you.
All right. So what is it that you say to people, or young people, or parents, or anyone that might be interested now in being part of Skills USA?
Whenever I have the opportunity to talk to a student's parent or guardian, I like to celebrate that their student has chosen this as a path. In most cases, you hear college is that direction, and when a student says that "I want to be a carpenter," or "I want to be a chef," I celebrate that.
There's such a huge need. I mean, I think we forget all of the things that we need in order to have, you know, a good life and good lifestyles.
There's such a huge need, especially here in California. There's a big skills gap, and we want to lead the way in bridging that.
Clay and I are delighted now to be joined by an alum of Skills USA, and a very talented one at that, Brian Glispy. Hello.
Hi.
How are you?
Just fine.
So you're, as an alum, you went straight out of one of the programs into a full-time gig in broadcasting, which you have been enormously successful in.
I learned about incident replay. I learned about maintenance repair. I learned about the cameras. I learned -- and then I went on to become one of the supervisors over at Fox on Fox Sports. The message really is, you got to learn it from the ground up. There's no easy way to do it.
If you want to learn more about Skills USA, it's really easy. You just log on to skillsusa.ca.org.
Skills USA has been guiding students' growth to more productive and successful careers since 1965. Show your love at a carnival in Skid Row, indulge in a day of donut delicacies, and discover the best-kept secret in used book thrifting. All this and more in Things to Do. The Skid Row Carnival of Love is coming back to downtown Los Angeles. This free carnival event provides vital resources like health checks, haircuts, and ID cards, alongside music, entertainment, and balloons, all in one 20,000-square-foot block party. Come down and show your love at the sixth annual Skid Row Carnival of Love, happening Saturday, January 25th, beginning at 10:00 a.m. For more information, check out their listing on Eventbrite. Love donuts? Who doesn't? So come check out L.A.'s sweetest weekend bash at Donut Fest L.A., brought to you by Indy Brewing Company. Enjoy a Sunday fun day filled with sampling donuts, enjoying beer, sipping coffee, and more. It's a tasty event for the whole family. Donut Fest L.A. kicks off Sunday, January 26th, beginning at 1:00 p.m. For more details, check out their listing on Eventbrite. Attention nonfiction aficionados, calling all book sales sleuths, Kya and urban fiction peeps, you are all invited to discover the best used book sale in East Hollywood. The Los Feliz Branch Library holds a huge used book sale made up of books from every genre: children's books, art books, showbiz books. You never know what you'll find at the Los Feliz Monthly Used Book Sale, happening every fourth Saturday. The library is located on Hillhurst and Franklin Avenues in the heart of Los Feliz. For details, call 323-913-4710. And that's a look at some things to do. That's it for this edition. I'm Umeema Rashid. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more L.A. This Week.
Let's protect our wildlife together. Please, no smoking in Griffith Park.
This city deserves a mayor who cares about all of the people. A mayor who's willing to try to protect the environment, economic development, housing, transportation, the needs of senior citizens, and the needs of young people. I believe that it can become one of the great cities of the world. If we can do that, we will have done much, not just for this city, but I think for this nation.
Good morning, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Tuesday, January 21st, and this council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Let's run through the agenda.
Blumenfeld Bonin, Busqueino Sadio, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Coretts, Krikorian, Lee, Martinez, O'Farrell Price, Rodriguez, Rue Wesson, 11 members present, and a quorum. Madam President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Coretts moves, and Mr. Harris Dawson seconds next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Curran Price moves, and Mr. Krikorian seconds next.
Today is Tuesday, Madam President, and time for the flag salute.
Mr. Krikorian, can you please see this in the flag? Salute, sir.
Thank you, Madam President. Facing the flag of our nation and mindful of the values that it represents, please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, members, let's direct your attention to the agenda. Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and run through the agenda.
Madam President, items 1 through 10 are items noticed for public hearing.
Do we have any cards on these items?
Yes, there are cards on items 1, 2, and 10.
Members, are there any specials on any of these items? Seeing none. Let's go ahead. What's next?
We can open the roll and vote on items 3 through 9.
Let's go ahead and open the roll on those items. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Okay, thank you. What's next?
Items 11 through 15 are items which public hearings have been held.
Members, are there any specials on these items? You're seeing none. Let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Thank you. What's next?
Items 16 through 18 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objections, those items are not before us. Are there any cards on any of these items?
Yes, there are cards on all three items.
Mr. Coretts, do you have a specials?
Yes, item 16.
Item 16 for Mr. Coretts. Any others? You're seeing none. What's next?
Items 19 and 20 are items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold those on the desk?
Yes, just go ahead and hold those two items on the desk.
And Madam President, that then takes council back to items called special or general public comment.
Okay, let's go ahead and hear item 16. Are there any cards on this item?
Yes, there are cards on 16.
I'm sorry, I have two cards. Patricia McAllister, are you here? Ms. McAllister, did you want to speak on item 16?
Okay, what did you say?
Item 16, ma'am.
Item 16. Okay, I have many more items than that.
You do, but I -- and we're going to take this one up first. So go ahead and speak on item 16.
Okay. Item 16. Let me find out which one that is. Resolution relative to requesting additional penalties to the Major League Baseball teams, Houston Astros and Boston Red Sox. Well, I just don't think we need to be dealing with baseball at this moment when you have 20,000 African-Americans sitting on Skid Row with children. What we don't see, we don't see the men, women, and children inside the shelters. We have hundreds of thousands. We have about 125 shelters throughout Los Angeles. So --
Ms. McAllister.
I don't think we need to be dealing with baseball, any sports, any kind of World Series, until we get our city together. As a matter of fact, I just took a photo of a man laying out on the streets in front of City Hall, which I plan to put on the web. One died a few weeks ago on the steps of City Hall. So we don't need to be dealing with any sports. Let's get the city together.
Thank you, Ms. McAllister. Mr. Previn, are you here? You're the last speaker on this item? Go ahead, sir. Item 16.
Thank you. It's Eric Previn from Studio City. And obviously, any kind of cheating is completely appalling and discouraged. And, you know, I appreciate what the council's doing, and I'm not sure how far we can run with this, trying to get the World Series trophies restored to the Dodgers. You know, I feel like it's a nice idea. There's no place for breaking the rules or providing two standards, for example, in the counting of the nominating petitions. But, you know, we may or may not be able to overturn that. I would say that the council should probably focus on the business at hand, because Jim Hill, who I think everybody in town respects, hashtag CBS L.A., made the point that you can't really -- I mean, we've had, you know, scandals in all sports, in track and field, in baseball itself. I mean, I -- we don't have to remember Barry Bonds, all these guys were -- so though I appreciate where we're coming from, I think at some point, we have to get back to work and address the significant problems that we're facing here. The Dodgers are a great team. They're going to rebuild and come back and win it fair and square. Thanks.
Members, that concludes speakers on item 16, so let's go ahead and close public comment on that item. Mr. Coretts, would you like to speak on item 16, sir?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Councilmember Sadio and I introduced this motion to acknowledge that the Houston Astros and the Boston Red Sox cheated in the 2017 and 2018 World Series and made an effort to steal those series by cheating from the Los Angeles Dodgers. This is significant, because not only is it a black eye for the national pastime, the worst scandal since the Black Sox scandal 100 years ago, but it's significant, because we seem to have a culture of cheating in this country, and it's time to say, no, this is not -- is not the new norm. This is something that we should push back against, and there should be consequences. Whether it's cheating on college applications, which is one scandal, whether it's performance-enhancing drugs, which we've seen as a scandal across a number of sports, even the question of whether Donald Trump did things to his political advantage and how we cheat and how we deal with cheating as a nation. This is not what we should be about. The country should be better than that. Our national pastime should be better than that, and there should be consequences. I never would have dreamed, even that may be naive, I've been a baseball fan and a Dodgers fan since I was three years old, I never dreamed that this kind of high-tech cheating would be employed and this kind of a system so you could know every single pitch that is coming. And a pitcher succeeds, especially one that is a finesse pitcher, by keeping people off balance, not knowing if it's going to be a curve or a fastball or a slider. If you know every pitch that's coming, it's going to be very difficult to win that game. And there is no doubt the Houston Astros knew every single pitch that was coming their way. This has to be addressed. We have to push back. We have to say no. This can't be the new norm in baseball. It can't be the new norm in our country, and that is why we ask for your I-vote today.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts. Mr. Sadio?
I'm going to thank my colleague, Mr. Corretts, for his cooperation and his leadership on this matter. We both came together with the same idea, and it's been a pleasure working with you and your staff for us to bring this forward. You know, colleagues, I'm a lifetime Angelino, and I grew up enamored with every sports team here in Los Angeles. I went to the Coliseum and saw the Rams in their blue and white uniforms. I saw the Dodgers play at the Coliseum and remember their great championship teams of the '60s. My dad took me to the Olympic Auditorium to watch wrestling, and I used to watch roller derby. As an adult, I know the difference between the two. One is a real sport, and one is just something that's set up. Baseball is our national pastime. It's something that we should revere. All of us have held a bat. All of us have been pitched to by our parents. And this says a very important message to the young boys and girls of this country, whether it's baseball or softball, whether it's soccer or football, basketball, for all the sports. We want to teach young people to set goals, to engage in teamwork, to play hard, to win or lose, and then go forward and become champions. This sends a separate message. This says that cheating is okay, and that if you have enough money, you can pay your fine and go forward. It's the same message that encourages people to cheat when their children want... they want their children to go to prestigious universities, and it's obviously a message that's been embraced by the president of this country. And so this is much more than about baseball. It's important for us to raise our voice and to say that this is not the new normal, that this is not acceptable, and that the Houston Astros were not the champions nor the best team that year. The fact of the matter is, but for the cheating of the Astros, the Dodgers would have wrapped up this series, and they would have been the champions of that year. This has an impact on our economy. We are nothing if we are not about art, sports, and entertainment. This affects the service sector of our economy, and it means more jobs, it means more economics, it means a greater city and a greater future for Los Angeles as the city of champions. And so I'm happy here. Paul, thank you for sharing this idea, and thank you for the cooperation of your staff. And members, I think that we all need to raise our voice to say that cheating is not acceptable. It's not the new normal, and for us, it's about the future and our young people. Let's go Dodgers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Mr. Blumenfeld?
Thank you. I want to rise very briefly because I actually don't think we should be spending a lot of time on this issue. Appreciate my colleagues raising it. Cheaters should not prosper. Clearly, that was wrong. They should be stripped of their title. I think the motion goes a little too far, saying that we have to award the series to the Dodgers after I think we ought to focus on the 2020 season and win that way as a consolation prize. I don't think that's very good. But this is purely symbolic, so I'm happy to support you in this, even though I... well, I could vote no. I don't want to be against our home team because, hey, we're all Dodgers fans. I'm a big Dodger fan. But I just, I do think that it's going a little far, talking about awarding the team. I don't think that's how we want to win our championship. We're going to win it for real in 2020. We don't need this consolation, but they should be stripped of the illegally got title. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blumenfeld. Mr. Harris Dawson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Corretts and Mr. Sadio. I concur with Mr. Blumenfeld and Mr. Sadio and Corretts. One thing I'd interjection to this conversation, and I want to be on the written record. There was another thing that happened during that series against the Houston Astros. A Houston Astros player, when we had, when the Dodgers had a Japanese-American pitcher on the mound pitching, whose signs they were stealing, by the way, they made racial and the most racial gestures that you can make against an Asian-American person. And it just is a lesson. When somebody tells you who they are, you should believe them, and I just want that to be on the record.
Back to Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say, it was always said, it doesn't matter whether you win or lose, it's how you play the game. And that needs to be the case again for our national pastime. I ask your I-vote.
Mr. Corretts. Members, there are no more speakers on the queue. Let's go ahead and vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Krikorian, we're going to move on to item number 20. Can you speak to this item, sir?
Thank you very much, Madam President. I don't think it's necessary for us to take this matter up in closed session. Budget and Finance considered this and recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendations.
All right. Let's go ahead and do that. Anybody wish to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Thank you. Let's move on to multiple speaker cards. Ms. McAllister, can I have you come back up? Ms. McAllister, I'm going to remind you, you're speaking on item 1. Item 2, 17, 18, and general public comment.
Okay, item 1. I thought I'd give three minutes. Oh, I did one. Okay. Item 1, Madam President, we have a lot of liens here, and I've been asking over the last three, four years to put a hold on these liens because many times this city council is taking property or putting liens on properties of people who shouldn't have liens, and I've met some of them. So I think we have a highway robbery system going on here, and I don't know what you guys are doing with these properties. You're probably selling them to your friends, or you're getting some kind of kickback, I think, from this. And many of the people that we see on Skid Row, they had liens put on their properties. I do see many of them at the courthouse sometimes complaining about they didn't even know that they had a lien and that their council member, like Corren Price and Harris and Wesson, they won't answer their calls, they won't do anything. Item number 16 and then 17, here you are denying a person who tried to prevent the city from foreclosing on their property, you're going to foreclose anyway. You decided to deny that person the right to maintain their property, and a lot of people don't... they're not like me. They don't study the law, they can't study the law, and they can't afford a lawyer. And as you know, the lawyers nowadays in Los Angeles represent illegal aliens, not for free, not the American citizen. So they're having a hard time finding a lawyer. So I think we're going to find many, many more people on the street, which is very, very, very sad. And remember, that 250% fee that you're charging, penalty fee that you're charging people, I want that to end too, because that's another thing that's keeping people from selling their homes and putting them on the street. I am very serious about what's going on in this city council, and we plan to address this. And Madam President, I'm going to have to write you up because it's your job to keep quiet in this chamber. That's part of your job, and it was Herb Wesson's job. I should have wrote him up. We're going to have some peace in this when I'm talking.
Madam, you have your one minute of general public comment.
Yes, I am going to ask all African-Americans, all blacks and all whites not to vote for any African-American in these upcoming elections. We cannot say, we cannot cry racism when we have African-Americans in the middle blocking. We can't say that Harris Dawson is racist, or Wesson, or Price. So that's why the white man put them up there, so that they can block any progress that we have. Also, I've gone to these meetings, the finance committee, they want to spend $300 million on computers and throw away these. I say, you don't buy computers. You lease. You don't buy computers. Now, how did... they just ignored me. I had a company in Chicago, software development company. I never bought computers. I leased. They come and get them after four years or so, bring me a whole new batch. You can get a good deal out there. Now, they ignored me, and guess who's on that committee? Lawyers. All of them are lawyers. Krikorian is lawyer. This guy is a business major, Corretts, and he is not going to be the controller. A controller must be a CPA or a person with those skills.
Thank you, Ms. McAllister. Next speaker, Eric Previn. Mr. Previn, you're speaking on item 1. Item 10 and 17, and your general public comment.
Thank you. Number 10, I want to talk about transparency. This is an item in my district where they vacate a little bit of city property, which is attached to a very large piece of privately-held property. And in the process of seeking the vacation, over at Blumenfeld's little committee over in the public works room, I brought to their attention that this is a massive something, and we should not be giving away the city property until there's transparency about what specifically it is. It's a large, multi-pulse parcel thing. So what kind of thing? And it's just up the street from the Harvard-Westlake Treasured Partner, a large athletic facility. Here comes Krikorian to defend. But I asked Carol Torosian, the local representative from CD2, explicitly, I said, "Sir, here's the item on the agenda. What is this?" And he claimed he had no knowledge, which is obviously what we call a red flag in the business, because nobody seemed to have. Then I went to Beatrice Pacheco over in planning, who's very knowledgeable and can help you get nothing in planning, nothing. I mean, they couldn't give me the addresses, which are 800 and something feet east of Witzit and Ventura Boulevard. So that is ding, 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 a major kind of tributary that's being... there's a firehouse there, and there's the Weddington Golf and Tennis, which is under a little bit of siege because Harvard-Westlake published a very expansive project with a huge underground parking, a very scary reaplication of that horrible monstrosity in the hill into the ground underneath possibly our lovely golf course, and removing our golf course to put a bunch of synthetic fields for the affluent community who will migrate into our community to do their exercise while eliminating the public amenity for the public. So I am hoping that we can get a straight answer and delay this approval of any vacation until they explain, what is this other enormous project? It may be that it's by right or something, but you have to be clear with the people of Studio City, or you have a big red flag. Now, in terms of the NRA item, we're going to general public comment now? Yeah, I was very unhappy with what just happened, because obviously, everybody treasures...
Mr. Previn, go ahead and move on to your general public comment.
Yeah, don't interrupt. Thank you. I was just doing that. But here's Jim Clark to come explain what we're doing here. The NRA is not a group I particularly like, but police officers, people who have weapons, for whatever reason, have to deal with them. Mitchell Farrell thought it was a good idea to make it so that anybody who wants to work in the big obelisk at City Hall in any way has to disclose if they've ever had an affiliation. Now, it was a bad idea at the get-go. We said, "Nice sentiment, but you're going to be sued, and don't do it." Our neighborhood council voted with the CIS. I'd like a little extra time. And quite frankly, that's exactly what happened. And then you just settled without even sharing what the terms are. So those terms, whatever they are, whether it's $10,000 or $100,000, or we're going to appeal, needs to be made transparent, and then you should take the money, if there is any, and collect it from the office holder accounts of all the characters who voted, knowing full well that this was a bungle. We're all against gun violence. All of us. I don't like the NRA, but this was just a shameless political maneuver to try to get into a swirling tornado of media. Bad. Is that clear? So I would ask that the office holders come up with the money for whatever costs are incurred. And obviously, you've already repealed or are going to repeal the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Now, let's go ahead and vote on a couple of items. Hold on for just a second, Ms. Richardson. We're going to vote on items 2, 10, 17, and 18. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
13 ayes.
Okay, those items passed. Go ahead, Ms. Richardson.
And as she makes her way forward, Madam President, there are requests to send items 17 and 18 forthwith.
Okay, without objection, that will be the order. Ms. Richardson, you have your one minute of general public comment.
Do the Democrats in Sacramento know what the racial compositions are of the Los Angeles school district, both Los Angeles City and Los Angeles County? How many high schools in Los Angeles are all white? Is that Beverly Hills, the Valley, Malibu? Maybe, maybe, but not necessarily. Santa Monica may be a high composition of white people. How about the junior colleges in Los Angeles City? I don't know of any in the city of Los Angeles. Maybe in the county of Los Angeles, maybe El Camino College, and maybe Santa Monica. And one question that I would like to ask is, if they're not all white, what is the racial composition of these high schools and these colleges in the city of Los Angeles and also in the county of Los Angeles? What is the racial composition of these colleges and high schools?
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. That concludes general public comments, so I'm going to go ahead and close general public comment. We have one speaker on item 1D. Jose Estrada, are you here? Good morning. You want to speak on this item?
Good morning. Translator, please.
Later?
Buenos dias.
Good morning.
Mi nombre es Jose Estrada.
My name is Jose Estrada.
Vengo en representación de Power.
I'm representing Power.
En apoyo de la moción 245.
In support of the motion 245.
Del concejal Mike Bonney.
From...
Mike Bonney, del concejal.
The concejal Mike Bonney.
Para conservar tres apartamentos.
To conserve three apartments.
De tres familias que van a ser desalojadas.
From three families that are going to be evicted.
Estamos en contra de eso porque...
We're against that because...
Ya tenemos muchas familias en las calles durmiendo en las banquetas.
We have too many families on the streets, sleeping on the sidewalks.
Y no es bueno pues que estas familias se vayan a la calle sin seguridad.
And it's not good that these families go to the street without security.
De regresar a esas viviendas.
To go back to those...
Hold on for just a second. Can you hold this time? He's not speaking to the item. I think he meant to sign up for item 17, not item 1D.
This is a 17?
He's referring to item 17, which we've already voted on?
Se está refiriendo...
He signed up for item 1D.
Se firmó para el tema 1.
No, tema 17.
No, number 17.
The items been voted on already.
Ya lo votaron. Pero muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Pero sí estamos en contra de que estas familias sean desalojadas.
But we are against that those families are the...
Gracias por el apoyo.
Ya votamos por esta moción. Muchas gracias.
We voted for this motion. Thank you.
Mr. Bonnen, did you want to say something?
Yeah.
Madam Clerk, you want to speak to item 1?
Yes, Madam President. On item 1, items 1D and 1H are recommended to be continued to February 18th.
Okay, without objection, that will be the order.
And then items 1E, G, and J should be received and filed as the fees have been paid, and 1F should be received and filed because there is a change in ownership, and all the remaining items, the liens can be confirmed. items, the liens can be confirmed.
Okay, without objection, let's go ahead and vote on the remaining balance. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Surgeons, let's prepare the council chamber for a closed session to discuss item 19.
Very important for me personally, because I was born and raised in the city of LA. And the public library that I frequented in my neighborhood served as like a sanctuary for me when I was a kid. And so I think it's really important that kids in the city get a taste of what art thinking could be like.
Hopefully, it has a lasting effect for them growing up. They'll remember to come back to their libraries. They'll remember to find the great things that we do at the libraries.
My name is Ken Pratt, Deputy Executive Officer for Metro. Welcome to Union Station. Welcome to Union Station, the transportation hub in the heart of Los Angeles. This is your stop for LA history, art, and culture at the largest multimodal passenger terminal in the western United States. For millions of people traveling to and through the city of Los Angeles by train, Union Station will be a stop along their journey. Since opening in 1939, the Los Angeles Union Station has been regarded as the last of the great train stations. It is also considered one of LA's architectural gems, featuring a Mission Modern style, an innovative blend of Spanish colonial, Mission Revival, and Art Deco architecture. Designed by a father-son architect team, John and Donald Parkinson, Union Station was created with the California lifestyle in mind. Union Station offers a spacious ticket concourse that includes a 110-foot-long American black walnut ticket counter, a waiting room with 40-foot windows adorned with brass, massive Art Deco chandeliers, inlaid marble floors, hand-painted Mission tiles, and expansive shaded patios, towering palm trees, and a 100-foot clock tower. These architectural features, along with its history and cultural significance, have helped Union Station receive historic cultural monument designation from the city of Los Angeles in 1972, and recognition by the National Register of Historic Places in 1980. Today, Union Station is more than just a transportation center. It is an experience for both visitors and commuters. It is home to the Trax Restaurant, one of the city's most unique formal culinary experiences, and the Imperial Western Beer Company and Streamliner Bar, as well as a variety of casual eateries. Artwork from locally-renowned artists can also be seen throughout the station. Take the Metro or the Dash and enjoy the sights, bites, and culture of this architectural marvel and Los Angeles landmark. I am Ken Pratt, Deputy Executive Officer with Metro, and I invite you to come and discover Union Station.
Welcome to the Port of Los Angeles, America's number-one port, ladies and gentlemen. I don't need to remind any of you about the extreme importance of the San Pedro Bay Port complex, which supports nearly 1 million California jobs and accounts for over $400 billion of economic impact to this country. Bringing industry, community, and the port together, all to have the conversation about what our social compact should be. And industry leaders have allowed for great investment, technology advancement, and implementation right here at the Port of LA.
It's an event that we do every year, and it's an opportunity for us to celebrate the New Year, to ring in the New Year, but also to give back to our community with an extraordinary day of arts, crafts, music, food. It's a wonderful day.
A lot of people do not get exposed to, because they don't have the privilege of traveling to Japan, or Okinawa, or any other country, so we're so grateful that we have the opportunity to get a taste.
The Skid Row Carnival of Love is coming back to downtown Los Angeles. This free carnival event provides vital resources like health checks, haircuts, and ID cars, alongside music, entertainment, and balloons, all in one 20,000-square-foot block party. Come down and show your love at the sixth annual Skid Row Carnival of Love, happening Saturday, January 25th, beginning at 10:00 a.m. For more information, check out their listing on Eventbrite. Love donuts? Who doesn't? So come check out LA's Sweetest Weekend Bash at Donut Fest L.A. Brought to you by Indy Brewing Company. Enjoy a Sunday fun day fit with sampling donuts, enjoying beer, sipping coffee, and more. It's a tasty event for the whole family. Donut Fest L.A. kicks off Sunday, January 26th, beginning at 1:00 p.m. For more details, check out their listing on Eventbrite. Attention nonfiction aficionados calling all book sale sleuths, Kya and urban fiction peeps, you are all invited to discover the best-used book sale in East Hollywood. The Los Feliz Branch Library holds a huge used book sale made up of books from every genre: children's books, art books, showbiz books. You never know what you'll find at the Los Feliz Monthly Used Book Sale, happening every Fourth Saturday. The library is located on Hillhurst and Franklin Avenues in the heart of Los Feliz. For details, call 323-913-4710. And that's a look at some things to do.
2020 Encore Wine Festival, woo woo!
We have 80 different vendors here. We have about 60 wineries from across the globe, gourmet food trucks, photo booths, live bands, DJ, lots of fun stuff for people to come and enjoy with their friends.
Everybody's got a taste in it, but events like this bring so many different people into one location. Really good wine, good friends, hopefully, a little bit of trouble, just a little bit.
Wanna learn more about the 2020 Census? Visit census.lacity.org.
What's celebrating here today is the signing of the treaty between the Californian forces and the United States forces, which brought to an end the Mexican-American war in California.
It's very important, because it represents a time in our history where we started a new chapter in California history, as United States Americans and Californians.
It's a very forgotten time period in our history. It's kinda overlooked.
A lot of people died and fought, and many things happened, and sometimes we take that for granted, and it's important to remember those important things.
There are things in every city that speaks to the heart and soul of every community. In San Francisco, it is the Golden Gate Bridge. In Chicago, it's the Bean. In New York, it is the Statue of Liberty. In South Los Angeles, it's the Watch Towers.
Hi, my name is Rosie Lee Hooks. I'm Director of the Watch Towers Art Center Campus. Come visit the Watch Towers Art Center Campus, where you'll see exhibitions, the Watch Towers of Simon &amp; Ordia, our garden studio with turtles and tortoises, and California natives. This massive man-made sculpture is made of steel, covered with mortar, and embellished with mosaic tiles, glass, clay, shells, and rocks. The Watch Towers are truly unique and receive cultural heritage monument status from the city of Los Angeles in 1963. Like the community, the Watch Towers have a strong foundation and recycles different types of materials to create something breathtakingly beautiful. The Watch Towers Art Center is a guardian of the Watch Towers. It provides programs designed for cultural enrichment and museum and art education to the Los Angeles community and the world at large. With the recent adaption of the South Los Angeles and Southeast Los Angeles community plans, the Watch Towers Art Center community will continue to shine and serve as the pulse of the community.
It's probably my very favorite event of the year. I love this event because there's more wisdom, more experience, more stories, more of Los Angeles's richness here in this event than any other event I go to each year.
I love to see how the Getty House opens its doors to all residents. It's the people's house.
It's a great gathering of folks from every zip code, every neighborhood, every part of LA.
So many times, we seem to be forgotten, and this is what makes me feel good.
Wanna learn more about the 2020 Census? Visit census.lacity.org.
You're arriving at Los Angeles International Airport in beautiful Southern California.
You're arriving at Los Angeles International Airport in beautiful Southern California. One of the first things you will see as you are landing is the ever-iconic LAX theme building. The LAX theme building is a modern icon and recognized worldwide as the space-age landmark of one of the world's youngest and most influential cities. Designed by architectural firm Pierrara &amp; Look, the building was completed in 1961 and features an observation deck and the Bob Hope USA. The spider-like appearance of the building is a playful and futuristic design illusion created by topping four steel-reinforced concrete legs with stucco. The building received cultural historic status from the city of Los Angeles for its distinguishing characteristics, which are valuable to the study of that period's style and method of construction. It is also an example of mid-century modern movie architecture. The LAX theme building serves as the symbolic gateway to Los Angeles and the futuristic designs intended to convey new prosperity and embrace a technological innovation. It has been and continues to be a constant reminder of Los Angeles' strive to be the city of tomorrow.
Welcome to Travel Town! All aboard! Travel Town has one of the largest collections of steam locomotives west of the Mississippi. And look at the size of these things behind us. Kids can climb on these trains and get inside the cabs. They can imagine themselves being engineers going down the track.
I like going inside the trains. Like, that's fun. It's fun.
My son has loved trains since he was small, so we've been coming here and just sort of made it a family tradition.
All aboard! Choo choo!
The initial idea around current is how do we make artwork accessible to the public in the largest scale?
It is a really timely moment to look at the intersection of art and food and look at issues of food through the lens of art and artists.
The easiest accessible food is processed food. And specifically in my neighborhood, it was flamey hot cheetos. These foods are bad for us. We start to realize, like, this is what's in our neighborhoods, and hopefully we can spark a conversation and cause some change.
Not sure who to contact in Los Angeles when you have to? Request bulky item pickup? Graffiti removal? Report animal-related services? Notify the city of illegal dumping? Pothole repair? Street sweeping? Find city resources? Pay your LADWP bill? And so on, and so on, and so on. Well, thanks to the updated MyLA311 app, you have the answer to all your questions in the palm of your hand. Just visit the App Store on iOS or the Google Play Store on Android and download the free MyLA311 app. How does it work? Well, let's take a bulky item, for example. It's way too big to fit in your car, right? Just open up the app, touch the "Create a Service Request" tab, and this takes you to the "Create Service Request" page. Under "Popular Service Requests," right on top of the list is "Burkey Items." Touch the tab and a new window opens up. If the item does not belong to you, touch the "No" button and fill out the required information. Check this out: You can hold and drag to move the pin or enter the street address or intersection below. Moving the pin is handy when the location needed does not quite match up to the nearest address or intersection, such as along park trails, the L.A. River, or on vacant lots. Hit the "Done" button when you are ready to move forward. Our new MyLA311 system will now inform you of other open service requests at the same location to avoid taking duplicate requests. Next, touch "Details." You'll notice there's quite a selection of bulky items to choose from. Once the item and quantity are selected, you can help us by providing even further details by touching the select location of the item. You can even add more than one item to this service request. Once all the items are added, touch "Done." If you haven't registered for an account, we'll talk more about that in just a bit. You can enter your contact info or choose to submit anonymously. Next, you can add a photo by taking one using the app or by using an existing picture on your phone. It's especially helpful to city departments if you include comments about hard-to-find locations such as "next to this address in the vacant lot under the palm tree." You'll notice a targeted service date has just been added. This is the date you will need to have your bulky items out on the curb by 5:00 a.m., if not out already. Then, all you need to do is hit "Submit" and confirm your service request, and you're done. A service request number will pop up. From here, you can create another request for this or another location, return to the homepage, or exit the app. But before you go, you'll see we provided the information of the appropriate agency handling your specific request. This will help you follow up if necessary. Let's go back to the homepage to check out some more details. Now, in order to view your service request, you first have to log on or register for an account. If you have an LADWP online account, you can use that login information. If not, you can still create your own MyLA311 account. The process is very similar to most online accounts. You can also find city facilities near your current location by selecting the "City Info" icon. You can either enter an address or touch the funnel icon to narrow or expand your search. Simply select the areas or services you are looking for, and then touch the icons that pop up on the map. You can look up information about city services from our City Services Directory. Other options include "City Bill Pay" and even viewing city social media feeds using City Hall News. Now, if you prefer to use the service from your computer, simply go to lacity.org and click the 311 icon, and then select your choice from the menu: MyLA311. It puts the power of City Hall in your hands.
Dad.
There are other ways of saving money and energy around your house. Did you know that LADWP is now offering cash rebates for you to retrofit your home to be more energy and water efficient? It's good for California, and it's good for Dad. Let's make California a better place to live, starting with our homes. To get your rebates, go to www.ladwp.com/save.
The 2020 Census is coming. L.A. wants you to be informed, be involved, and be counted. Visit census.lacity.org for more information.
Los Angeles County has one of the highest homeless populations in the nation. Many of our homeless neighbors are veterans, women, children, survivors of domestic violence, and working individuals who can't keep up with housing costs. You could do something about it by volunteering for the 2020 Greater Los Angeles Homeless Count on January 21st, 22nd, and 23rd. Sign up at theycountwillyou.org because everyone counts, no matter where they live.
Very important for me personally because I was born and raised in the city, L.A. And the public library that I frequented in my neighborhood served as like a sanctuary for me when I was a kid. And so I think it's really important that kids in the city get a taste of what art thinking could be like.
Hopefully it has a lasting effect for them growing up. They'll remember to come back to their libraries. They'll remember to find the great things that we do at the libraries.
My name is Ken Pratt, Deputy Executive Officer for Metro. Welcome to Union Station. Welcome to Union Station, the transportation hub in the heart of Los Angeles. This is your stop for L.A. history, art, and culture at the largest multimodal passenger terminal in the western United States. For millions of people traveling to and through the city of Los Angeles by train, Union Station will be a stop along their journey. Since opening in 1939, the Los Angeles Union Station has been regarded as the last of the great train stations. It is also considered one of L.A.'s architectural gems, featuring a Mission Modern style, an innovative blend of Spanish colonial, mission revival, and Art Deco architecture. Designed by a father-son architect team, John and Donald Parkinson, Union Station was created with the California lifestyle in mind. Union Station offers a spacious ticket concourse that includes a 110-foot-long American black walnut ticket counter, a waiting room with 40-foot windows adorned with brass, massive Art Deco chandeliers, inlaid marble floors, hand-painted mission tiles, and expansive shaded patios, towering palm trees, and a 100-foot clock tower. These architectural features, along with its history and cultural significance, have helped Union Station receive historic cultural monument designation from the city of Los Angeles in 1972 and recognition by the National Register of Historic Places in 1980. Today, Union Station is more than just a transportation center. It is an experience for both visitors and commuters. It is home to the Trax Restaurant, one of the city's most unique formal culinary experiences, and the Imperial Western Beer Company and Streamliner Bar, as well as a variety of casual eateries. Artwork from locally renowned artists can also be seen throughout the station. Take the Metro or the Dash and enjoy the sights, bites, and culture of this architectural marvel and Los Angeles landmark. I am Ken Pratt, Deputy Executive Officer with Metro, and I invite you to come and discover Union Station.
Welcome to the Port of Los Angeles, America's number-one port, ladies and gentlemen. I don't need to remind any of you about the extreme importance of the San Pedro Bay Port complex, which supports nearly 1 million California jobs and accounts for over $400 billion of economic impact to this country.
Bringing industry, community, and the port together, all to have the conversation about what our social compact should be. And industry leaders have allowed for great investment, technology advancement, and implementation right here at the Port of L.A.
It's an event that we do every year, and it's an opportunity for us to celebrate
It's an event that we do every year, and it's an opportunity for us to celebrate the new year, to ring in the new year, but also to give back to our community. It's an extraordinary day of arts, crafts, music, food. It's a wonderful day.
A lot of people do not get exposed to because they don't have the privilege of traveling to Japan, or Okinawa, or any other country. So we're so grateful that we have the opportunity to get a taste.
The Skid Row Carnival of Love is coming back to downtown Los Angeles. This free carnival event provides vital resources like health checks, haircuts, and ID cards, alongside music, entertainment, and balloons, all in one 20,000-square-foot block party. Come down and show your love at the sixth annual Skid Row Carnival of Love, happening Saturday, January 25th, beginning at 10:00 a.m. For more information, check out their listing on Eventbrite. Love donuts? Who doesn't? So come check out LA's sweetest weekend bash at Donut Fest L.A. Brought to you by Indy Brewing Company. Enjoy a Sunday fun day filled with sampling donuts, enjoying beers, sipping coffee, and more. It's a tasty event for the whole family. Donut Fest L.A. kicks off Sunday, January 26th, beginning at 1:00 p.m. For more details, check out their listing on Eventbrite. Attention nonfiction aficionados calling all book sale sleuths. Kya and urban fiction peeps, you are all invited to discover the best used book sale in East Hollywood. The Los Feliz Branch Library holds a huge used book sale made up of books from every genre: children's books, art books, showbiz books. You never know what you'll find at the Los Feliz Monthly Used Book Sale, happening every Fourth Saturday. The library is located on Hillhurst and Franklin Avenues in the heart of Los Feliz. For details, call 323-913-4710. And that's a look at some things to do.
2020 Uncorked Wine Festival, woo-woo!
We have 80 different vendors here. We have about 60 wineries from across the globe, gourmet food trucks, photo booths, live band, DJ, lots of fun stuff for people to come and enjoy with their friends.
Everybody's got a tasting room, but events like this bring so many different people into one location. Really good wine, good friends, hopefully a little bit of trouble, just a little bit.
Want to learn more about the 2020 Census? Visit census.lacity.org.
What's celebrating here today is the signing of the treaty between the Californian forces and the United States forces, which brought to an end the Mexican-American war in California.
It's very important because it represents a time in our history where we started a new chapter in California history as United States Americans and Californians.
It's a very forgotten time period in our history. It's kind of overlooked.
A lot of people died and fought, and many things happened, and sometimes we take that for granted, and it's important to remember those important things.
There are things in every city that speaks to the heart and soul of every community. In San Francisco, it is the Golden Gate Bridge. In Chicago, it's the Bean. In New York, it is the Statue of Liberty. In South Los Angeles, it's the Watts Towers. Hi, my name is Rosie Lee Hooks. I'm Director of the Watts Towers Art Center Campus. Come visit the Watts Towers Art Center Campus, where you'll see exhibitions, the Watts Towers of Simon Ordia, our garden studio with turtles and tortoises, and California natives. This massive man-made sculpture is made of steel, covered with mortar, and embellished with mosaic tiles, glass, clay, shells, and rocks. The Watts Towers are truly unique and received Cultural Heritage Monument status from the City of Los Angeles in 1963. Like the community, the Watts Towers have a strong foundation and recycles different types of materials to create something breathtakingly beautiful. The Watts Towers Art Center is a guardian of the Watts Towers. It provides programs, design for cultural enrichment, and museum and art education to the Los Angeles community and the world at large. With the recent adoption of the South Los Angeles and Southeast Los Angeles community plans, the Watts Towers Art Center community will continue to shine and serve as the pulse of the community.
It's probably my very favorite event of the year. I love this event because there's more wisdom, more experience, more stories, more of Los Angeles's richness here in this event than any other event I go to each year.
I love to see how the Getty House opens its doors to all residents. It's the people's house.
It's a great gathering of folks from every zip code, every neighborhood, every part of LA.
So many times we seem to be forgotten, and this is what makes me feel good.
Want to learn more about the 2020 Census? Visit census.lacity.org.
You're arriving at Los Angeles International Airport in beautiful Southern California. One of the first things you will see as you're landing is the ever-iconic LAX theme building. The LAX theme building is a modern icon and recognized worldwide as the space-age landmark of one of the world's youngest and most influential cities. Designed by architectural firm, Pierrin and Luckman, the building was completed in 1961 and features an observation deck and the Bob Hope USA. The spider-like appearance of the building is a playful and futuristic design illusion created by topping four steel reinforced concrete legs with stucco. The building received cultural historic status from the City of Los Angeles for its distinguishing characteristics, which are valuable to the study of that period's style and method of construction. It is also an example of mid-century modern movie architecture. The LAX theme building serves as the symbolic gateway to Los Angeles, and the futuristic designs intended to convey new prosperity and embrace a technological innovation. It has been and continues to be a constant reminder of Los Angeles's strive to be the city of tomorrow.
Welcome to Travel Town, all aboard! Travel Town has one of the largest collection of steam locomotives west of the Mississippi. And look at the size of these things behind us. Kids can climb on these trains and get inside the cabs. They can imagine themselves being engineers going down the track.
I like going inside the trains, like that's fun, and it's fun.
My son has loved trains since he was small, so we've been coming here and just sort of made it a family tradition.
All aboard! Choo-choo!
The initial idea around current is how do we make artwork accessible to the public in the largest scale?
It is a really timely moment to look at the intersection of art and food, and look at issues of food through the lens of art and artist.
The easiest accessible food is processed food, and specifically in my neighborhood, it was flaming hot Cheetos. These foods are bad for us. We start to realize, like, this is what's in our neighborhoods, and hopefully we can spark a conversation and cause some change.
Not sure who to contact in Los Angeles when you have to? Request bulky item pickup? Graffiti removal? Report animal-related services? Notify the city of illegal dumping? Pothole repair? Street sweeping? Find city resources? Pay your LADWP bill? And so on, and so on, and so on. Well, thanks to the updated MyLA311 app, you have the answer to all your questions in the palm of your hand. Just visit the App Store on iOS or the Google Play Store on Android and download the free MyLA311 app. How does it work? Well, let's take a bulky item, for example. It's way too big to fit in your car, right? Just open up the app, touch the "Create a Service Request" tab, and this takes you to the "Create Service Request" page. Under "Popular Service Requests," right on top of the list is "Burkey Items." Touch the tab and a new window opens up. If the item does not belong to you, touch the "No" button and fill out the required information. Check this out: You can hold and drag to move the pin, or enter the street address or intersection below. Moving the pin is handy when the location needed does not quite match up to the nearest address or intersection, such as along park trails, the LA River, or on vacant lots. Hit the "Done" button when you are ready to move forward. Our new MyLA311 system will now inform you of other open service requests at the same location to avoid taking duplicate requests. Next, touch "Details." You'll notice there's quite a selection of bulky items to choose from. Once the item and quantity are selected, you can help us by providing even further details by touching the select location of the item. You can even add more than one item to this service request. Once all the items are added, touch "Done." If you haven't registered for an account, we'll talk more about that in just a bit. You can enter your contact info or choose to submit anonymously. Next, you can add a photo by taking one using the app or by using an existing picture on your phone. It's especially helpful to city departments if you include comments about hard-to-find locations such as "next to this address in the vacant lot under the palm tree." You'll notice a targeted service date has just been added. This is the date you will need to have your bulky items out on the curb by 5:00 a.m., if not out already. Then, all you need to do is hit "Submit" and confirm your service request, and you're done. A service request number will pop up. From here, you can create another request for this or another location, return to the homepage, or exit the app. But before you go, you'll see we provided the information of the appropriate agency handling your specific request. This will help you follow up if necessary. Let's go back to the homepage to check out some more details. Now, in order to view your service request, you first have to log on or register for an account. If you have an LADWP online account, you can use that login information. If not, you can still create your own MyLA311 account. The process is very similar to most online accounts. You can also find city facilities near your current location by selecting the "City Info" icon. You can either enter an address, or touch the funnel icon to narrow or expand your search. Simply select the areas or services you are looking for, and then touch the icons that pop up on the map. You can look up information about city services from our City Services Directory. Other options include city bill pay, and even viewing city social media fees using City Hall News. Now, if you prefer to use the service from your computer, simply go to lacity.org and click the 311 icon, and then select your choice from the menu. MyLA311, it puts the power of City Hall in your hands.
The 2020 Census is coming. LA wants you to be informed, be involved, and be counted. Visit census.lacity.org for more information.
Los Angeles County has one of the highest homeless populations in the nation.
Los Angeles County has one of the highest homeless populations in the nation. Many of our homeless neighbors are veterans, women, children, survivors of domestic violence, and working individuals who can't keep up with housing costs. You could do something about it by volunteering for the 2020 Greater Los Angeles Homeless Count on January 21st, 22nd, and 23rd. Sign up at theycountwillyou.org because everyone counts, no matter where they live.
Very important for me personally because I was born and raised in the city of LA. And the public library that I frequented in my neighborhood served as like a sanctuary for me when I was a kid. And so, I think it's really important that kids in the city get a taste of what art thinking could be like.
Hopefully it has a lasting effect for them growing up. They'll remember to come back to their libraries, they'll remember to find the great things that we do at the libraries.
My name is Ken Pratt, Deputy Executive Officer for Metro. Welcome to Union Station. Welcome to Union Station, the transportation hub in the heart of Los Angeles. This is your stop for LA history, art, and culture at the largest multimodal passenger terminal in the western United States. For millions of people traveling to and through the city of Los Angeles by train, Union Station will be a stop along their journey. Since opening in 1939, the Los Angeles Union Station has been regarded as the last of the great train stations. It is also considered one of LA's architectural gems, featuring a Mission Modern style, an innovative blend of Spanish colonial, Mission Revival, and Art Deco architecture. Designed by a father-son architect team, John and Donald Parkinson, Union Station was created with the California lifestyle in mind. Union Station offers a spacious ticket concourse that includes a 110-foot-long American black walnut ticket counter, a waiting room with 40-foot windows adorned with brass, massive Art Deco chandeliers, inlaid marble floors, hand-painted Mission tiles, and expansive shaded patios, towering palm trees, and a 100-foot clock tower. These architectural features, along with its history and cultural significance, have helped Union Station receive historic cultural monument designation from the city of Los Angeles in 1972, and recognition by the National Register of Historic Places in 1980. Today, Union Station is more than just a transportation center, it is an experience for both visitors and commuters. It is home to The Trax Restaurant, one of the city's most unique formal culinary experiences, and the Imperial Western Beer Company, and Streamliner Bar, as well as a variety of casual eateries. Artwork from locally renowned artists can also be seen throughout the station. Take the Metro or the Dash and enjoy the sights, bites, and culture of this architectural marvel and Los Angeles landmark. I am Ken Pratt, Deputy Executive Officer with Metro, and I invite you to come and discover Union Station.
Welcome to the Port of Los Angeles, America's number one port, ladies and gentlemen. I don't need to remind any of you about the extreme importance of the San Pedro Bay Port Complex, which supports nearly 1 million California jobs and accounts for over $400 billion of economic impact to this country.
Bringing industry, community, and the port together, all to have the conversation about what our social compact should be. And industry leaders have allowed for great investment, technology advancement, and implementation right here at the Port of LA.
It's an event that we do every year, and it's an opportunity for us to celebrate the New Year, to ring in the New Year, but also to give back to our community with an extraordinary day of arts, crafts, music, food. It's a wonderful day.
A lot of people do not get exposed to because they don't have the privilege of traveling to Japan, or Okinawa, or any other country, so we're so grateful that we have the opportunity to get a taste.
The Skid Row Carnival of Love is coming back to downtown Los Angeles. This free carnival event provides vital resources like health checks, haircuts, and ID cars, alongside music, entertainment, and balloons, all in one 20,000-square-foot block party. Come down and show your love at the sixth annual Skid Row Carnival of Love, happening Saturday, January 25th, beginning at 10:00 AM. For more information, check out their listing on Eventbrite. Love donuts? Who doesn't? So come check out LA's sweetest weekend bash at Donut Fest LA, brought to you by Indy Brewing Company. Enjoy a Sunday-funday feel with sampling donuts, enjoying beer, sipping coffee, and more. It's a tasty event for the whole family. Donut Fest LA kicks off Sunday, January 26th, beginning at 1:00 PM. For more details, check out their listing on Eventbrite. Attention nonfiction aficionados, calling all book sale sleuths, KYN urban fiction peeps, you are all invited to discover the best used book sale in East Hollywood. The Los Feliz Branch Library holds a huge used book sale made up of books from every genre: children's books, art books, showbiz books. You never know what you'll find at the Los Feliz Monthly Used Book Sale, happening every fourth Saturday. The library is located on Hillhurst and Franklin Avenues in the heart of Los Feliz. For details, call 323-913-4710. And that's a look at some things today.
2020 Uncorked Wine Festival, woo woo!
We have 80 different vendors here, we have about 60 wineries from across the globe, gourmet food trucks, photo booths, live band, DJ, lots of fun stuff for people to come and enjoy with their friends.
Everybody's got a tasting room, but events like this bring so many different people into one location. Really good wine, good friends, hopefully a little bit of trouble, just a little bit.
Want to learn more about the 2020 Census? Visit census.lacity.org.
What's celebrating here today is the signing of the treaty between the Californian forces and the United States forces, which brought to an end the Mexican-American war in California.
It's very important because it's, it's, it represents a time in our history where we started a new chapter in California history as United States Americans and Californians.
It's a very forgotten time period in our history, it's kind of overlooked.
A lot of people died and fought, and many things happened, and sometimes we take that for granted, and it's important to remember those important things.
There are things in every city that speaks to the heart and soul of every community. In San Francisco, it is the Golden Gate Bridge; in Chicago, it's the Bean; in New York, it is the Statue of Liberty; in South Los Angeles, it's the Watts Towers. Hi, my name is Rosie Lee Hutz. I'm Director of the Watts Towers Art Center Campus. Come visit the Watts Towers Art Center Campus, where you'll see exhibitions, the Watts Towers of Simon Ordia, our garden studio with turtles and tortoises, and California natives. This massive man-made sculpture is made of steel, covered with mortar, and embellished with mosaic tiles, glass, clay, shells, and rocks. The Watts Towers are truly unique and receive Cultural Heritage Monument status from the city of Los Angeles in 1963. Like the community, the Watts Towers have a strong foundation and recycles different types of materials to create something breathtakingly beautiful. The Watts Towers Art Center is a guardian of the Watts Towers. It provides programs, design for cultural enrichment, and museum and art education to the Los Angeles community and the world at large. With the recent adoption of the South Los Angeles and Southeast Los Angeles community plans, the Watts Towers Art Center community will continue to shine and serve as the pulse of the community.
It's probably my very favorite event of the year. I love this event because there's more wisdom, more experience, more stories, more of Los Angeles's richness here in this event than any other event I go to each year.
I love to see how the Getty House opens its doors to all residents. It's the people's house.
It's a great gathering of folks from every zip code, every neighborhood, every part of LA.
So many times we seem to be forgotten, and this is what makes me feel good.
Want to learn more about the 2020 Census? Visit census.lacity.org. You're arriving at Los Angeles International Airport in beautiful Southern California. One of the first things you will see as you are landing is the ever-iconic LAX theme building. The LAX theme building is a modern icon and recognized worldwide as the space-age landmark of one of the world's youngest and most influential cities. Designed by architectural firm, Pierrin and Luck, the building was completed in 1961 and features an observation deck and the Bob Hope USA. The spider-like appearance of the building is a playful and futuristic design illusion created by topping four steel-reinforced concrete legs with stucco. The building received cultural historic status from the city of Los Angeles for its distinguishing characteristics, which are valuable to the study of that period's style and method of construction. It is also an example of mid-century modern goofy architecture. The LAX theme building serves as the symbolic gateway to Los Angeles and the futuristic designs intended to convey new prosperity and embrace a technological innovation. It has been and continues to be a constant reminder of Los Angeles's drive to be the city of tomorrow.
Welcome to Travel Town, all aboard! Travel Town has one of the largest collection of steam locomotives west of the Mississippi. And look at the size of these things behind us. Kids can climb on these trains and get inside the cabs. They can imagine themselves being engineers going down the track.
I like going inside the trains, like that, that's, that's fun, it's, it's fun.
My son has loved trains since he was small.
My son loved trains since he was small, so we've been coming here and just sort of made it a family tradition.
All aboard!
The initial idea around current is how do we make artwork accessible to the public in the largest scale?
It is a really timely moment to look at the intersection of art and food and look at issues of food through the lens of art and artists.
The easiest accessible food is processed food, and specifically in my neighborhood, it was flaming hot Cheetos. These foods are bad for us. We start to realize, like, this is what's in our neighborhoods and hopefully we can spark a conversation and cause some change.
Not sure who to contact in Los Angeles when you have to? Request bulky item pickup? Graffiti removal? Report animal-related services? Notify the city of illegal dumping? Pothole repair? Street sweeping? Find city resources? Pay your LADWP bill? And so on, and so on, and so on. Well, thanks to the updated MileA311 app, you have the answer to all your questions in the palm of your hand. Just visit the App Store on iOS or the Google Play Store on Android and download the free MileA311 app. How does it work? Well, let's take a bulky item, for example. It's way too big to fit in your car, right? Just open up the app, touch the "Create a Service Request" tab, and this takes you to the "Create Service Request" page. Under "Popular Service Requests," right on top of the list is bulky items. Touch the tab and a new window opens up. If the item does not belong to you, touch the "No" button and fill out the required information. Check this out: You can hold and drag to move the pin or enter the street address or intersection below. Moving the pin is handy when the location needed does not quite match up to the nearest address or intersection, such as along park trails, the LA River, or on vacant lots. Hit the "Done" button when you are ready to move forward. Our new MileA311 system will now inform you of other open service requests at the same location to avoid taking duplicate requests. Next, touch "Details." You'll notice there's quite a selection of bulky items to choose from. Once the item and quantity are selected, you can help us by providing even further details by touching the select location of the item. You can even add more than one item to this service request. Once all the items are added, touch "Done." If you haven't registered for an account, we'll talk more about that in just a bit. You can enter your contact info or choose to submit anonymously. Next, you can add a photo by taking one using the app or by using an existing picture on your phone. It's especially helpful to city departments if you include comments about hard-to-find locations such as "next to this address in the vacant lot under the palm tree." You'll notice a targeted service date has just been added. This is the date you will need to have your bulky items out on the curb by 5:00 a.m., if not out already. Then, all you need to do is hit "Submit" and confirm your service request, and you're done. A service request number will pop up. From here, you can create another request for this or another location, return to the homepage, or exit the app. But before you go, you'll see we provided the information of the appropriate agency handling your specific request. This will help you follow up if necessary. Let's go back to the homepage to check out some more details. Now, in order to view your service request, you first have to log on or register for an account. If you have an LADWP online account, you can use that login information. If not, you can still create your own MileA311 account. The process is very similar to most online accounts. You can also find city facilities near your current location by selecting the "City Info" icon. You can either enter an address or touch the funnel icon to narrow or expand your search. Simply select the areas or services you are looking for and then touch the icons that pop up on the map. You can look up information about city services from our City Services Directory. Other options include "City Bill Pay" and even viewing city social media feeds using City Hall News. Now, if you prefer to use the service from your computer, simply go to lacity.org and click the 311 icon and then select your choice from the menu. MyL311. It puts the power of City Hall in your hands.
Not it, not it. Again? Take that. Dad.
There are other ways of saving money and energy around your house. Did you know that LADWP is now offering cash rebates for you to retrofit your home to be more energy and water efficient? It's good for California, and it's good for Dad. Let's make California a better place to live, starting with our homes. To get your rebates, go to www.ladwp.com/save.
The 2020 Census is coming. LA wants you to be informed, be involved, and be counted. Visit census.lacity.org for more information.
Los Angeles County has one of the highest homeless populations in the nation. Many of our homeless neighbors are veterans, women, children, survivors of domestic violence, and working individuals who can't keep up with housing costs. You could do something about it by volunteering for the 2020 Greater Los Angeles Homeless Count on January 21st, 22nd, and 23rd. Sign up at theycountwillyou.org because everyone counts, no matter where they live.
Very important for me personally because I was born and raised in this city, LA. And the public library that I frequented in my neighborhood served as like a sanctuary for me when I was a kid. And so I think it's really important that kids in the city get a taste of what art thinking could be like.
Hopefully it has a lasting effect for them growing up. They'll remember to come back to their libraries. They'll remember to find the great things that we do at the libraries.
My name is Ken Pratt, Deputy Executive Officer for Metro. Welcome to Union Station. Welcome to Union Station, the transportation hub in the heart of Los Angeles. This is your stop for LA history, art, and culture at the largest multimodal passenger terminal in the western United States. For millions of people traveling to and through the City of Los Angeles by train, Union Station will be a stop along their journey. Since opening in 1939, the Los Angeles Union Station has been regarded as "the last of the great train stations." It is also considered one of LA's architectural gems, featuring a Mission Modern style, an innovative blend of Spanish colonial, Mission Revival, and Art Deco architecture. Designed by a father-son architect team, John and Donald Parkinson, Union Station was created with the California lifestyle in mind. Union Station offers a spacious ticket concourse that includes a 110-foot-long American black walnut ticket counter, a waiting room with 40-foot windows adorned with brass, massive Art Deco chandeliers, inlaid marble floors, hand-painted Mission tiles, and expansive shaded patios, towering palm trees, and a 100-foot clock tower. These architectural features, along with its history and cultural significance, have helped Union Station receive historic cultural monument designation from the City of Los Angeles in 1972 and recognition by the National Register of Historic Places in 1980. Today, Union Station is more than just a transportation center. It is an experience for both visitors and commuters. It is home to the Trax Restaurant, one of the city's most unique formal culinary experiences, and the Imperial Western Beer Company and Streamliner Bar, as well as a variety of casual eateries. Artwork from locally renowned artists can also be seen throughout the station. Take the Metro or the Dash and enjoy the sights, bites, and culture of this architectural marvel and Los Angeles landmark. I am Ken Pratt, Deputy Executive Officer with Metro, and I invite you to come and discover Union Station.
Welcome to the Port of Los Angeles, America's number-one port, ladies and gentlemen. I don't need to remind any of you about the extreme importance of the San Pedro Bay Port Complex, which supports nearly 1 million California jobs and accounts for over $400 billion of economic impact to this country.
Bringing industry, community, and the port together, all to have the conversation about what our social compact should be. And industry leaders have allowed for great investment, technology advancement, and implementation right here at the Port of LA.
It's an event that we do every year, and it's an opportunity for us to celebrate the New Year, to ring in the New Year, but also to give back to our community with an extraordinary day of arts, crafts, music, food. It's a wonderful day.
A lot of people do not get exposed to because they don't have the privilege of traveling to Japan, or Okinawa, or any other country. So we're so grateful that we have the opportunity to get a taste.
The Skid Row Carnival of Love is coming back to downtown Los Angeles. This free carnival event provides vital resources like health checks, haircuts, and ID cards, alongside music, entertainment, and balloons, all in one 20,000-square-foot block party. Come down and show your love at the sixth annual Skid Row Carnival of Love, happening Saturday, January 25th, beginning at 10:00 a.m. For more information, check out their listing on Eventbrite. Love donuts? Who doesn't? So come check out LA's sweetest weekend bash at Donut Fest L.A. Brought to you by Indy Brewing Company. Enjoy a Sunday fun day filled with sampling donuts, enjoying beer, sipping coffee, and more. It's a tasty event for the whole family. Donut Fest L.A. kicks off Sunday, January 26th, beginning at 1:00 p.m. For more details, check out their listing on Eventbrite. Attention nonfiction aficionados, calling all book sale sleuths, K-Y-A and urban fiction peeps, You are all invited to discover the best used book sale in East Hollywood. The Los Feliz Branch Library holds a huge used book sale made up of books from every genre: children's books, art books, showbiz books. You never know what you'll find at the Los Feliz Monthly Used Book Sale, happening every 4th Saturday. The library is located on Hillhurst and Franklin Avenues in the heart of Los Feliz. For details, call 323-913-4710. And that's a look at some things to do.
2020 Uncorked Wine Festival, woo woo!
We have 80 different vendors here. We have about 60 wineries.
Yes, and the only thing to report out of closed session is that the city attorney's recommendations were accepted.
All right, very well. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Madam Clerk, what's before us now?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Posted and referred. Members, are there any announcements? Mr. Blumenfield?
The Homeless Count is tonight. We're doing a... Out of my office in Reseda, Van Owen and Van Alden. I know we're doing it all over the city. You go to the website, just urge anyone listening to participate in the Homeless Count.
Thank you, Mr. Blumenfield. Any other announcements, members? Seeing none, and we can all rise for adjourned motions. Mr. Sadio?
Is the family here?
Do you need a minute, sir? Let me find... Is there any other adjourned motions to my right?
The family's here. I want them to come back.
Okay, sure.
Madam Chair, Madam President, thank you so much. You know, the First District has had a lot of loss at the end of the year. As you know, I lost my aunt. Tony Recosa, my staff, lost his brother, and he's been down in San Diego. My chief of staff just lost her grandmother. So there's a lot of loss, and not only in our office but in our community. And so it's with deep sadness, and I want to acknowledge the family for being here. Really difficult when you lose somebody. And particularly more difficult when it's tragic. And so it's with deep sadness to announce the death of Homer Garcia, who was tragically killed on New Year's Day. He was a lifelong resident of the city, resided in Lincoln Heights for over 36 years. His sister, Maribel, is a member of the Lincoln Heights Neighborhood Council. Homer, as we had talked about earlier today, played baseball in Lincoln Heights Rec Center, and he was a pretty good pitcher. And at one moment had a no-hitter until the famed Darryl Strawberry came up to bat in a high school game. He had dreams of being a Dodger pitcher as all athletes in Lincoln Heights and Boyle Heights and Highland Park dream. He was a straight-A student during his adolescence years and later attended DeVry Institute, where he learned and studied the electrical field. He worked for the city for about two years as a booking officer with LAPD and later pursued his career as an electrician working for various construction companies in the area. He was a musician. He loved to play his guitar, sing, write his own music, and learn other instruments. He started playing his guitar in junior high school, played at various functions throughout the community. And he uses music to bring people together, his love for music and his friends, enjoyed and appreciating his talents. Homer had an incredible sense of humor, one of these persons that always cracks the joke and makes you laugh, the person that in a moment of calm or silence, people look to to add that humor. He's going to be remembered for his beautiful soul, his charming and funny personality, his talents, that infectious smile and laugh. He will be remembered for all his great songs that touch so many hearts. Our city and our district is saddened by his loss, and we share in that loss with his family and his friends as we try to go forward. With that, I ask you, my dear colleagues, to close in the memory of Homer Montez Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. May he rest in peace. Our condolences to the family that's here. Any other adjourned motions? Seeing none, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.